Is Mark on?
It's a bunch of orange on there. Yeah.
Unknown. Yeah. He was, he was TBD.
Tonight is a little bit different. So most to be here in Portland, regular scheduled council meeting. So surprise, we've got another meeting ahead of that. This is our way of getting a good audience representative. Public hearing that we are entering into right now, seven oh one PM or later than one hit forty four. This public hearing is, I'll give you an opportunity to back to say comments, opinions, whatever, about the fiscal year budget for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. He can ask you to sign up for that. Maybe one submit. Here in budget portion of that, but if you do, just a few general guidelines, you come to the public, state your name, and would ask you to try to hold your comments for at least three minutes or below. The public comment is nation and yours as a figure, your point of view or consideration. Any questions you have will not be answered by this council this evening. It is not a dialogue back and forth, it's just here in your comments, budget. And if there is a question, it would refer to our city administrator, all party in the case ahead. It goes without saying, especially in City of Malden, please, your comments should be not directed at the Robert Torres, bringing to anyone sitting up here. You're not to turn around and debate someone else in the audience has a different opinion. You show right to state yours and that's what is. So with that being said, let me give you a little concussion. The, the public hearing for our fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, the City of Malden. This public hearing is an opportunity to see council to hear from the public any comments on this operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty four, and ending June the thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Notice of this public hearing was published in a newspaper of general circulation our community has required by law. The budget has proposed consideration tonight. It's balanced and total, thirty eight million, three hundred sixty three thousand, five hundred seventy dollars. The budget includes investments in more police officers and firefighters, initial staff of public works, and more funding for stormwater improvements. The proposed mileage rate for fiscal year twenty twenty five is fifty nine point nine miles, which is an increase over fiscal year twenty twenty four, which was fifty three point nine miles. A copy of the proposed budget has been on file in the office of the city administrator and is available on city's website. At this time, I'd like to recognize anyone with us here tonight or online wishing to make a comment during this public hearing. Please stay on step forward to be recognized. Anyone on? You know, behind you. Seeing or hearing anyone that has any comments. If there aren't anyone that I proceed to close the public hearing. Having had, having provided an opportunity for all those present, inclined to be heard because they have no others. I will close this public hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget for the city of Malden. I'll now call and order our regularly scheduled city council meeting Monday, May twenty 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 four, approximately seven oh eight PM. That the records reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Mr. Parks, who is out of town. He was able to attend.
I don't see him, no sir.
Shouldn't the best? Before I go much further, I want to recognize some special guests we have in our audience. I have, I had the distinct privilege of attending. A penny. It was Eagle Scout. And the Eagle Scout post fifteen Saturday over in Malden Methodist Church. And for those of you hopefully that have scouting for all those years, yes, they had it when I was growing up. It's quite an adventure for the family as these young men and girls make their way through the ranks of scouts. So. Post fifteen is in the back there and the special guest, our newest Eagle Scout, I mentioned, is Councilman Rickus, Mr. Douglas Neerich and his parents, Douglas Fender. Our newest Eagle Scout. Thank you. So all the effort you put in to get in your Eagle badge was exciting. The rest of what we're doing tonight, you'll probably find boring, but are growing up, so hang in there with us. With that, also welcome all, we have some other guests from Malden High School, appreciate y'all being here. There will be a little presentation in a few minutes. Uh, that will recognize you, so appreciate you being here along with our other citizens. Our department heads, our city minister, who says, I'm giving our city clerk who keeps it solid, straight as she can, Cindy Miller, Department head, and our city attorney, for dating you, appreciate all being here this evening. I believe our invocation and our pledge allegiance, we live in Charlotte.
So choosing to be about it. Holy God, we lay before you our trumps, that we may open our eyes to the beauty of creation. As your disciples, we sit at your feet, learning from your words, we lay before you our breath, that we may breathe in peace and breathe out tension, that we may breathe in comfort and breathe out grief, that we may breathe in trust and breathe out worry. Thank you for the many blessings in our lives, especially the talented young people that attend us this evening. And as we begin the city business, the Lord, we ask that you give us wisdom. We plan, plan for the city of Malden, we trust you to order our next steps. In your name we pray, amen.
If you please join us in the faith.
What allegiance to the light, the United States of America, into the republic, stands one nation under. Anything visible with liberty and justice.
Privilege I have as mayor is to present various proclamations, various presentations that honor tonight. To present this proclamation with half of this council and the city. Whereas twenty twenty four Malden High School Cadet Pilgrimage first, the CWEA, Carolina Winter Ensemble Association Championships. And whereas CWEA governs the southeast for indoor competitions. These championships, highest level of cadet code of art can participate in. And whereas the Cadet Guard has placed first in three of the past four years. And whereas the Malden High School Cadet Pilgrimage members are Catherine Balleras, Adriana Banks, Ella Bock, Destiny Burgess, Jayla Carter Burdette, Eden Floyd, Serenity Garrison, Tamara Getters, Scarlet Granger, Emma Hound, easily healthy, Madison Herbert, Kirsten Hicks, Kate Neesel, Cadence Johnson, Harmony Lee, several. Oh yeah. Pardon me, but, oh yes, oh yeah. Sorry, Allison Carson. Now therefore, we are proclaiming that I, Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, along with my fellow council members, hereby proclaim that we are proud of Malden High School Cadet Guards accomplishments and recognize them for winning the CWEA championship. And I would ask that their leaders and all the members and butchers and unions would come up front. For a minute, if you're looking down, we will something for you and parents feel free, all the butchers. Are all.
Uh, yeah. Chris, Chris is not here, correct? And where's Dr. Shite? Uh, Catherine? Ariana? Ella? Destiny? Jayla? Key? Serenity? Tamara? Scarlet? Emma Ham? Hazly? Madison? Kirsten? Hayden? No, it's not, you sure? Hayden? Harmony? Deborah? Allison? We get everybody? Well, real quick, before you guys finish taking your pictures, my daughter is now beyond bitch, she's in the varsity guard and. But I don't think you, because I've just seen that many years, how much hard work you guys put in and the level of achievement that you've made is phenomenal, so congratulations to Harmony. Smile for pictures though.
Yeah, if you get up, if you don't want that photo.
Yeah, don't forget to stand up and be what you need.
Next item on our agenda is city council meeting minutes of April the fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Council, you have it in your package, because our collective council won't accept them as minutes. And motion for, for second. Let me say good, Ms. King, any clarifications, corrections? Here on all of those in favor, we convince us submitted, say aye. Both black sign, here none motion carries. Also, minutes of special power, council meeting, May sixth, twenty four. Any clarification, corrections, comments? Here on all of those in favor, we miss, submitted, say aye. Those opposed, aye. Now we're at the next item on our agenda is the first public comment session. That public comment session is limited, you add them to on the agenda for tonight. Main job guidelines, if you do, say you're not on. Hold your comments for three minutes. Place your commitment. And sharing comments to this council. After debate, we, dialogue. Evening. Uh, with as you sign up. I have three young ones signed up, we, we, thing on the agenda. Don't get up. Appreciate that, here none, our next item on the agenda is report from our city, that's right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everyone, just have a few great updates real quick to, for everyone. So first off, the city's signature concert series returns starting next Friday at the Malden Cultural Center Amphitheater. Amped Up Fridays presented by Duke Energy and Piedmont Natural Gas features music, food, and fun for the entire family all summer long.
Yeah.
This Friday, oh, I'm on the wrong week already. Next week, so I gotta spell, that's why. I'm pulling double duty next week, alright, so this week, it is, I say, May twenty fourth. Alright, so we'll kick off this Friday, thank you for that. With Swingin' Mandalions, then next up will be the Mighty Kicks, the Entertainers, the Shag Doctors, Soul Purpose Band, Rhythm City Band, James Radford Band, Randomonium, the Catalinas, and to close this out with our fireworks show will be the Vinyl Junkies. These weekly free concerts will start at six thirty, which is thirty minutes earlier than last year, and wrap around nine thirty. We ask that you bring out your dancing shoes, lawn chairs, blankets, and all your friends and neighbors to a great Amped Up Friday series. If you need any more information, please visit the maldenculturalcenter.org's website for, for info there. Next thing I wanted to mention, that tomorrow, the Malden Sports Center will be closed for the day for the installation of new gym equipment. The new equipment includes treadmills, recumbent bikes, stationary bikes, stairmasters, and various weight machines. Council authorized the replacement of this equipment as part of the FY twenty four budget. Old but usable equipment will be relocated to either the senior center or the new fire station headquarters, and the equipment that's reached end of life will be sold at surplus. The Herculean effort to remove and relocate all of the old equipment will not be possible without the help of the public works and fire departments. And so a special thanks to those individuals, staff members tomorrow, who will be taking care of those, those, that, that move. If all goes to plan, the sports center will reopen its doors on Wednesday with all new equipment. To see the new equipment and to speak with staff about joining one of the best fitness facilities in the city, stop by the Malden Sports Center at ten City Center Drive. And last, but not least, I have for my report, also, we have tonight with us is our chamber president, Ms. Kimberly Guthrie, who has an update for councils, look.
We should want to thank the city for our partnership, we appreciate it, we look forward to continuing to foster our relationships together. Only go over a couple of bits that we had briefly. We had an open house, we appreciate the city's attendance in there, had a few Catholics come out, and we had about three new memberships in that. Chamber golf permit was a success. Um, we appreciate the fire, police, and sports center for being on board. We had a ribbon cutting at Greenwell Off-Road on Murray Drive. Need to have that, it's nice to see the mayor and Seth out there. Also, I wanted to mention before I go into the future, we're pleased to have Seth join us in June, our board of directors. That'll be great. Um, this Thursday, I asked a bit, that I'm really happy about.
They're all like.
We have a business of a hundred dollars this Thursday at our ads in Malden. Uh, we have ribbon cutting and clarity charmed stick in Malden, uh, Thursday the thirtieth. We're having a morning networking on the channel, I don't believe that's. It's bringing a bad one credit, you know, this is. Uh, and a part ring with the women's road race club. To have your business out, uh, networking on Tuesday eleventh. Um, and finally, we'll go too much after that, but we're going to have a car show, we got bridge vacation on the fifteenth. Looking forward to that, who is gonna give a brilliant choice of work? And we're hoping, and I believe that Terry's gonna give a mayor's point of order. But, um, perhaps.
Thank you. That's it, sir, yes, sir.
At this point, reminder into business portions, a lot of detail. If you would like, if it's the time to go pick up Terry out, or you would like to leave, feel free to do so. You don't have to, you're welcome to stay, but if you're chomping at the bit. Something else, we pull the other thing. Again, thank you for being ready to react. Agents. Next item on our agenda is report from our standing committees, first up, finance and policy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Sir, publicly saying, Ms. King.
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Public works, Mr. Braylon. Economic plan and develop, Mr. Magnus.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple of bragging, I hate that our students left from Malden, but I did want to point out, uh, after talking with Mr. Duncan, that Ms. Danielle Scott was named secondary art teacher of the year. Uh, and Mrs. Stephanie Smith, who had the unfortunate occurrence of marrying a classmate of mine, class ninety one, um, was named Greenville County Assistant Principal of the Year, she's assistant principal of Malden High School, so congratulations to both of them.
Building code. Ruth?
Yeah.
Congratulations, you're all good.
Thank you, Mayor, we have. Thirty for football cheerleading, boys and girls soccer and baseball and stuff. We have. I was also told by Mr. Duncan beforehand that the girls four by eight hundred team for Malden High School uh, was state five A champions, they also set a record at nine minutes, twenty seconds, and forty.
I guess, I think so, yeah, a little or hundreds.
That's, that's. May twenty eighth from June first, there's a baseball park. State thoughtful tournament, Heritage Park. The walking trail and basketball parks are, are getting ready to be completed or started, as you say, as the roofing project at senior separate has been completed. And ongoing improvement to find for the park, uh, as though to continue to get done, so a lot of stuff coming on. That's my report.
Next, item on our agenda is unfinished business, we ordinance for second reading.
We have four ordinance, first is important to provide an efficient property owned by Clayton Bond and located at Two Woodhedge Ford by one hundred percent efficient method to establish a zoning classification of our fifteen residential.
Any discussion? Here on all those in favor of motion approval, second reading. If that question, you say aye. Those opposed, black sign, here none of the motion carries.
Next ordinance for second reading is an amendment to the Malden zoning ordinance, moving certain uses from those allowed in the S one and I one zoning districts.
Second. Any discussion questions? Here on all those in favor of motion to adopt, on second reading, say aye. Those opposed, black sign, here none of the should.
Next ordinance for second reading is an amendment to the Malden zoning ordinance establishing regulations for nonconforming uses, structure, size, lots, and signs.
Second.
Page, looking out of your package. That be mine, this. Uh, under legal nonconforming structures, third section, only single family residential structures. Off to the right, last sentence says, meet required facts. That setbacks. Or is there something else that I don't know?
Bear with me, I don't have the same page.
David, do you want mine?
I could do, yeah, she did recap that for us, but I didn't, I could not find the answer. Actual ordinance, so say aye.
I see, it's meaningful. Yeah, that should say setbacks.
This right upon the chain, we go on the top of what he has is. Any other questions? Here on all those in favor of motion to adopt, second reading. Say aye. Those opposed, black sign, here none of the motion carries, let's see. Next item, uh, will be two, we have to entertain two different motions, there's a, we give a tracks.
Again, for the approval of sale of certain property, you know, restorers wrote, we sat on a DOT for the purpose of improvement of the, uh, bottom of the project. for the purpose of improvement of the bottom of the project and to authorize additional temporary construction pieces.
Second.
Sorry. Okay. Right. Track 205.
Okay. So I have motion, Mr. Gray, number two, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. King, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion. I say, Mr. Gray, number track 205, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, white sign. That could miss correct for track two.
Like make a motion for the approval of sale of some property. DOT for the purpose of run through the... Additional temporary construction for track two, two, nine.
Motion is or second?
Second.
Second, Mr. King, any discussion questions? Hearing none, all of the favor of the motion for track two, two, and say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Next, our new business ordinance on first reading.
There are six ordinances tonight for first reading. First is an ordinance to found a property consisting of approximately 3.3 acres located at Millard Road.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a third reading. What you about to do is our second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Reynolds. Any questions, discussions? Here none, all of the favor of the motion to adopt on first reading, the regional parade is on the road, say aye.
Aye.
Those pose white sign. Hearing none, nothing cares.
Next ordinance for first reading is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by the city of Malden and located at Adams Mill Road by 100% efficient method and to establish a zoning classification of R-15 residential for said property.
Good. Second.
Second.
Any discussion questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of motion to adopt.
Next ordinance for first reading is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by the city of Malden and located at Fowler Circle by 100% efficient method and to establish a zoning classification of R-10 residential said property.
Second.
Here. Gosh. Quick. Here.
Mayor, first where at balls? The end of the road, that's the same. Now we can break that for century.
The other. Motion to adopt on this reading, say aye.
Aye.
Those pose white sign. Hearing none, the motion cares on the... Correction. This no.
Next ordinance for first reading is to amend the Malden Land Development Regulations establishing procedures for subdivisions and to invoke the pending ordinance doctrine.
Thank you for being able to be out today for this on first reading, however, I said, if there's necessary for us.
Second.
There. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of the favor of the motion to adopt, what I said, if I can, that's a... Well, second reading, say aye. Those pose white sign.
Next ordinance, first reading is the ordinance 2324 budget.
We got way to go, finance for roads.
And then ordinance.
The motion is a second.
Second.
Mr. King. Any discussion? Comments, objections?
I just do want to make a clarification that we will do the public hearing for that ordinance next month as part of second reading. Yes, sir.
And budgeted to the end. Books, there's amendment of... It's all I can compare. We need to make sure.
This is, you know, this is first reading on this. The motion to adopt on first reading, the FY100 budget. I would frankly, aye. Those pose white sign. Hearing none, nothing cares.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, like the motion to reading in 2024, 2025, but in ordinance.
Not sure if you approve it, it looks like. Second. That was wrong. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you think you mentioning the investments at the public hearing for this meeting that working hard as well as sleeping hard to keep this in. That's people and product and this is a solid vote in the area of the city this year and have us prepared on the next year. That's all Adams, Mayor, make here.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all of the favor of motion to be approved on first reading, FY100 budget, ordinance, say aye. Those pose white sign. Hearing none, the motion cares. With you over next slide.
First standing committee Adam is a resolution to approve a temporary easement along East Butler Road in South Carolina DOT for the purpose of road improvements as part of the Butler Road Improvement Project.
It's not going to affect the things of purpose of the ordinance party. While the ring, we get.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gray. Any discussion? Question? Hearing none, all of the favor of motion to approve the temporary easement along East Butler Road. We've got going to be a fleet for the first of supposedly. Say aye.
Aye.
Those pose white. That's Mr. Man. Mayor regarding the next agenda, I am due to a professional relationship that I have with one of the parties involved, and I need to tease myself for any deliberations in this until the silence is reached. This. No.
Council is requesting to approve an automatic aid agreement with Boiling Springs Fire District.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the auto aid agreement with Boiling Springs Fire District.
King, go second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all of the favor of motion to approve the other way through. Say aye.
Aye.
King, where was given those with the call?
Council is requesting to adopt a revolution to adopt an operating and capital program for the Malden Fire Service Area. Yeah, I love it.
There's a ton of questions right now.
Yes.
This allows to make a motion to approve or solution to approve and adopt a five-year operating and capital program for the Malden Fire Service Area. One fifty-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Craig. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of the favor of the motion to approve a resolution to approve and adopt, what have your operating capital program for Malden Fire? Thursday, say aye. Those pose white sign. Hearing none, motion. Here's the two. This movie.
Council is requesting to approve the use of the board with your funds to purchase a K9 and also a new drug terminator, which is a drug burning device.
Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm making motion to approve the use of work the chair funds to purchase a K9 at the cost of $11,000 and to purchase a new drug terminator. The cost of $7,000 for a total of $18,000.
Second. Great. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of the favor of the motion to approve the use of full cure funds to purchase a K9 and reverse it to a terminator. Through a burning. Say aye. The next item, you'll be before us will be a part of consideration to give you the whole letter of record. Two steps ago, Mr. Man, as you're showing this. Uh, yeah. Again, I don't even... Thank you, sir. Sorry about that. All right, what I would need before council is if there was a motion to consider informally to the uh, a K, say, no movement. Yeah, the motion for that may be the informal that it does. Better. The item to sign easement with duty energy for installation of underground and overhead. There a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion questions?
Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to make a note, we are going to be looking, this is a first reading for an ordinance to adopt a new easement with Duke. We are waiting on exhibit that will replace the current exhibit. Something that's a little bit more detailed so that we know, we'll know exactly where the easement lines are, both center line and off-center for future development of that parcel. We hope to have that in the next couple of weeks, but we did use that temporary diagram just to give council an understanding of what we're looking. We have appropriated some of that funding, but not all of it, and it's based on a loose estimate that is about nine months old now from a loose estimate, which was about a year old. So I've kind of rounded it up as to where I expect it to be. We have appropriated some funds. We will likely need to appropriate more funds, and that'll be coming once Duke now has their final layout for the overhead to underground conversion. They are doing, they're going to put together their final numbers and then bring it back to the city. But part of that actually will be offset by a Duke match program or overhead to underground conversion. So the true outlay of what we'll need is not fully known yet, but we'll have that here to council soon. But that, that would be a separate initiative that we have for the overhead to undergrounding. This would be approving the easement of allowing the current transmission line that's there to, to be able to, so right now, the current easement that is there is only for poles and equipment mounted to pole. They actually call it facilities. So to locate anything on the ground, they actually have to have a different style easement that allows for equipment to be placed on the ground. So this does both. It's going to keep certain parts of that above ground in the air over on the southeast side of the parcel. But there are also going to be two, installation of two switch gears, which are identified in the yellow boxes with the green. The yellow boxes are the switch gears. The yellow circle is a new pole. It'll connect to an existing pole to be able to serve downline users, but will not interfere with the overhead to undergrounding prior to that point. But this is just for the easement. We actually still have to come back and approve a letter of intent with Duke Energy to do the overhead underground conversion. So more to come.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we are back to our second comment here. In the past, tonight, this one is open for any subject that I feel is in this, I will raise the catch for this council. And I don't have anyone signed up for it.
No, sir.
Counsel, anybody has earning desire to say? Hearing none, that we will move on to next, a call for executive session. For those that are new, this is an area where we have legal matters that we have to discuss and we live upstairs. So we will end this meeting, we'll go up there and say for needed for, and we say to you. They would have come down here to dig up with. It was always what I'm gonna say. I was gonna say, I would order you to be, you might be out there for. With that, that's how I would call for executive sessions.
Mayor, we're in executive session of the city, related to Bridge Wing Station under section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight, eighty-two, and for personnel managers in the administrative department under section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight.
I, next question, your second. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Any questions? Hearing none, all of the favor of the second, the third, you say aye.
Aye.
Those pose white sign. We will now move up there.
One second, please. Go back to screen sharing. Share. Yes, sir.
All right, the council is returning to the chambers approximately nine and twelve P M. Mr. Mayor, we can report out. Thank you, Mayor, coming out and taking a session at nine ten P M. Next item before us, the population on the island of Chris in executive session. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, I move that we authorize a mayor and order his designated to execute memorandum of understanding related to an economic development matter.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Here now all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I'm hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Previous city, very recommendation for the re organization, the administrative department.
Wait, sir. Motion is our second.
Second.
The King. Yes. Here now all in favor of the motion to approve the city government's agreement. Department. Correct and say, say aye. Those opposed, like sign. Anything else? Thank God, I'm more of a counsel concerned.
Mayor. Just want to take a minute to congratulate all of the new graduates of Malden High School, uh, congratulations, class of twenty twenty.
Sir. Anyone else? I have one, thank you. Just a, a quick refer to, of course, I think, you know, we've had some recent discussion, comments made that I will be sure were clarified at home. Uh, this city operates on a council form of government and within that are six standing committees. Each one of you chair one of those committees and participate as a member in two other committees. One thing that comes up over that is basically, especially today, sometimes schedules don't allow you to be here or whatever. And there's one point that's come up, I'll count on, be sure you understand. That is, this is in ordinance in section two, next thirty three. That if you're going to preside over a meeting, which is you're going to chair your community, this one. Physical presence is required to preside over a meeting. It's not a meeting that we just decide we want to do or anything else, definitely. This council has the authority to change any of it. As of now, with this stated that way, it's up to me to be sure that everyone physically understands that. I would ask everyone that if there is a meeting you're not going to make, if you're the chair, you communicate that to myself and all. Or city administrator. That would help. Because one of the things I want you to put yourself in the center of having to do is to contact another committee member. As soon as you make contact with another member on your committee, you now have a moral. Charge. Which could be a condo, who would be better if you don't, we've all been around long enough. Something, uh, working with Markson, not any bonus, but the fact that when we run into each other, we're two members of a three man committee. Professionally, ethically, you cannot discuss anything that would be coming before you. So don't you, I wouldn't want any of us to put us in a position like I've heard those two talking. Show them. And. And, and keep this city up in. How as much as we can. All this say is. Know. There's, you know, hearing. Comments of conversations, be sure you're aware that the same committee watch your comments and communications. Other than that, no need to. I hear that refresh, of course. Maybe that will come from. Here now, what's up, pleasure on the German. And all of the favorable, say aye. The German.
Thank you, everyone.